We're receiving comments from the public at this time. Anybody, before you go address the board, may do so?
Lee Gadway's walking in right now.
If he doesn't do it now, you'll have to do it at the end of the board. At the end of the meeting.
Here's your names. I made a copy of them. This is Lee Gadway, for people I don't know.
You're up.
I'm up.
Who would have thought it was him, huh?
Lee Gadway, I'm the assistant coach for the high school hockey team. And we were hoping to put it in a locker room, a high school locker room, in the rink here, behind the bleachers. The money, we're gonna try and raise most of it and get the rest donated by businesses, lumber and stuff, whatever we can, Chasing Hardware, sample lumber and stuff. The work, we're gonna do ourselves. We have a parent that's a carpenter. He said he'd be willing to do it. We helped him. Just wanted to know if we'd be able to do it or not. To know what your feelings were on it. Hoping that we'd be able to do it. Because right now, during our high school games, each team takes up two locker rooms. And after our hockey game, there's usually a men's league that starts. And they have to wait half to quarter, so now before they can get in the locker room, because we're using two and the other team's using two. So we got to the point where we had to take our stuff out of one locker room, put it all into, you know, out of two into one. So now you've got 23 kids in one locker room. So we talked with the kids about it, and they're all excited about it. Talked to Mike O'Brien, and he seemed like he was happy with it, too. So as far as the village, you know, we appreciate any donation, but, you know, we are gonna try and do it all on our own. We are doing fundraises. We already have money raised for it. And we have a fire wash this weekend for it. And we have some more ball drives we're doing. And hopefully, we can get it done for this hockey season. That's what we're looking at.
How much do you think it's gonna cost, do you know, Lee?
We don't really know, because with the price of lumber, it is coming down. So the guy didn't give us a quote, because he says it takes too much time to do it. And he says the price just keeps coming down anyway, so... But we're looking at enough for 24 players, 25 players, all in one locker room. It would be behind the bleachers.
Are you talking about one locker room?
Yes. It would be behind the bleachers, from the big door, approximately this way.
See, one of the concerns I've got is the construction being fireproof. Do you have plans on doing, like, maybe a fire-resistant sheet rock or something in it? Or haven't you gotten that far?
That, we haven't gotten that far. That wasn't really in it, but I'm sure it can be done, you know?
It's more expensive to get the fire, you know, fire-resistant stuff. And plumbing, you talked about any plumbing?
There's not gonna be any plumbing whatsoever.
Just changing.
Just, yeah, just changing and any heater. You know, there'll be heater in there. But as far as plumbing, the kids want water, they have to fill the bathroom. You know, they can go that far for it. Simple as possible is the best, and that much less we have to worry about in there.
I think Mr. Tatro should be notified. See what you can and can't do back there. See if it's gotta be fire-coated or not fire-coated, or whatever.
Right. That would be no problem.
That's code enforcement officer.
Yeah, yeah. I don't mind.
We're not really utilizing that space right now either. So it's not really, it's kinda like improving your house is the way I look at it. And if you're gonna do a lot of the work yourselves, then it's not gonna really cost us any money. It's only gonna make the rink a nicer place. And it's better for business, too, when it gets down to it. Because the four locker rooms just aren't enough. Those four locker rooms should be two locker rooms, for the amount of size. So when you have back-to-back where people are coming in, it takes you a few minutes to put your stuff on, it takes a few minutes after to take it up. So just, we just don't have the space. So it's probably a pretty good idea if I should have addressed it before then.
And, you know, like we told Mike, during the summertime, he can use it for storage space. You know, it's not the high schools, it's the rinks. It's not, you know, we're gonna have a lock on it and everything, where the door's gonna lock, so the kids can leave their stuff in there, they don't have to drag it back and forth. But that's as far as we'd be doing with it.
So during the high school season, it would be used solely by the high school team?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because they would have their, they would be able to leave their stuff in there from day to day, instead of dragging it home every, every night.
Okay, but then at the off-times from the season, it would be available to Mike or the Civic Center staff?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I guess I'm a little confused. You said from the big door on the side of the building, this way?
Yes. As far as there's an exit door there, we can't block that. We have to stay on that side of it.
And would there be any access from this end back underneath the bleachers? Or not? It would be entirely closed off?
It would be all, we would go right from the bleachers to the wall. That's what we've got for a plan right now.
But the doors are both ends, weren't they?
No, we're, we're only having one end, we have bleachers or places for the kids to sit on the end also. And then they would use this small door to go out onto the rink. Because there's already a door there, so we, Mike said he could put mats down.
I think you're gonna run into them.
No problem, right there. I think you might have two remains of any rest.
Really?
That's what the code enforcement officer did.
Right.
They don't have two doors on any of the other rinks.
No, we only have one in locker rooms right now.
You got one in the back. You can go right out the back.
Only one, one locker room goes out the back, though. One goes for the shower, and one goes out the back.
I'm just telling you what, who code is.
Yeah.
It's not, I'm almost, I could almost bet on that. But that's what Mike-
Right, that's something Mike could let us know.
And I suggest that you come back with a, with a definite blueprint.
We have to have a blueprint here.
Yeah, yeah.
I made a copy. I thought about height and width and-
What he's got? I don't know if he has all the measurements on here. Uh, we're talking like 36 feet long, I know he has that. And the width, I believe, is 10 foot, I believe, from the bleachers to the wall. Height-wise, it would be to the top of the bleachers, which is about 8 foot. And there'd be room for, the way we had it figured, there'd be room for 25, I believe, in there. Which is a full team. You know, and the room for the coaches also.
When do you expect to start that?
As soon as we begin. We're hoping towards the end of this month, begin of next month. You know, whenever we-
You have to move some part of the decisions, and I, if he wants to start it.
Well, we gotta make sure that we get all the okays on. I certainly think it's a good idea if we, you know, make, but we've got to meet the code requirements and, and, you know, whatever Mike Tatro has got in mind.
Right.
A motion, if they affect that, with code enforcement, it's okay.
I guess my, my preference would be, and I'm sorry if this delays you, would be to wait until he's spoken to Mike, and then discuss it again at the next meeting. I think there may be some issues that we might need to revisit, and we don't get a chance to meet except at award meeting, rather than, um...
Did I give you enough time to win that to the-
What's the next one?
Two weeks.
All right, yeah, those should be. You know, as long as we know, you know, you know, you can't say yes, go ahead, but as long as we know, you know, you're in favor of it, if everything, you know, goes according to code, then at least we have an idea, you know, that we can, you know, plan a little bit.
And even if it would be possible to see some, see your drawing, either now or after you've talked to Mike Tatro, so that we have, I can at least have a better idea in my mind of what-
Brian does have the, that's-
That's a copy of that.
September 7th, at the next board meeting. You have to leave it in.
Most of the rinks, the other rinks in the area have already gone to this concept, because it's, it's a utilization of the space, that's the bottom line. We just don't have the locker room facilities.
See, and I guess, too, and I, just for my own purposes, and I, and if you had something like this that would relate how it's gonna fit in to the exterior of the locker room, this, this is the inside, is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Do you have something that would show, or at least what, you know, we maybe, we could meet, we would meet with Mike Tatro, and we could walk through or something prior to the board meeting on the 7th, and just take a look at where it's going to be? I just would be more comfortable.
It's like, like, say this is behind the bleachers, it's gonna be boxed in, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not really aesthetics or anything, it's gonna be-
May nobody go to see it, that's for sure.
Yeah, exactly.
Nobody's gonna see it.
That's not what I'm concerned about. I'm more concerned about what Mike has to say about the plan and where it's going to be. I just wanna, you know, there's no sense in your going very far down the road, should there be a problem, why don't you talk to Mike Tatro?
Right. Whatever, you know, I can talk to Mike right off, you know, I know Mike, and I can call him, whatever.
He's a contractor, too.
Yep.
He can give you an idea, maybe some budget. I was hoping maybe with the village part of it, that maybe we could throw one of the guys from the rink in for a little labor part of that, so as it goes, you know, we're right on, you know, that's kind of a contribution, because considering that, you know, it is our rink, and, you know, so it may help you guys out a little bit, too. And I know Ray's pretty handy, and I guess Mike Lundy's pretty handy, too.
If you wait till October, probably wouldn't be a problem, but not till October. Those guys are quite busy.
Yeah, and we'd like to get it done before that, because then we have the youth hockey starting. You know, we'd like to have it done, so, you know, we, the contractor said he could do it in the weekend, with a couple of guys helping him. And, you know, it's not a whole lot to it, it's just, you know, getting started at, and getting all, everything here, and-
What will be on the floor?
Rubber mats. That's what we're looking at. Either it's gonna be rubber mats or carpet, but I believe it's gonna be rubber mats.
And you just come out the door and go right onto the ice? Which is where, like, closet pro teams and stuff do it, too.
Now, when they're, another thing, it'd be good, you'd be away from the visiting team, you wouldn't be next to them at all. Because right now, they both go out the same door, and we've never had a problem with, since we've been coaching, but it just, it just, you know, it, I think it'd be a lot better. And the kids are really excited about it. And they keep asking, well, we're gonna do it? And I said, well, we have to, you know, through all the channels first, and, but-
Would you have no ballpark figure what you're gonna cost, or what?
Not, not right now.
No, really. No concern about it.
Oh, I know, I know.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's, they want to pay for it.
Yeah.
Just kidding, I, I just, you know, I, you know, get with Mike as much as you can, and then I guess we can make a decision.
I guess the question is, does anybody have an objection, providing that everything is met with the building officer?
Well, it's not off the code, is it?
That's what I said, make a motion.
The concept is good.
Pending, pending Mr. Tatro's outcome. If he says, no, you can't do this, then we'll be done. Since that's-
Okay, so did you want me to make that motion, and then-
So if Mike says we can go ahead with it, we still wait till the board meeting before we start anything? Is that, is that the way it would go? Or, you know, I, I just don't wanna go start something, you know, and juggle for it?
How about if I make the motion that, pending approval and the code enforcement officer, that we go ahead and do this?
So why don't you make the motion, second, and then have some discussion?
Okay, I'll make the motion that, pending approval with Mike Tatro, that the bill, the addition is gonna meet the code, he gives the okay that we go ahead with this.
I'll second it. Motion made by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Discussion.
The only thing is, like we just said, we'll always make sure that-
Make sure that all the keys are crossed, and the guy's dotted, and-
The only thing they said is something about-
We've gotta talk with Mike, too. Make sure.
Mike O'Brien, or Mike?
Yeah, I really should be talking with Mike O'Brien. I am, this, tonight's the first I've heard of this.
Yeah, well, I, I-
I'm not real thrilled about that.
Yeah, well, I think they've been, Mike wasn't real in favor of it at first, until Mike Lindon came back and said, listen, this is what we're gonna do, you know, and it's gonna make it better for everybody, we can make the rink better, and it's gonna make it, you know, just better for everybody. Then he's in favor of it now, so, I mean, he's the boss here, so, but-
Any other discussion?
Perhaps the two Mikes should take a walk-through and check it out.
I think it'd be a good idea to go over it, yes.
That's why I just-
Now, what we want and what we can have might not be quite lined up, so we just gotta make sure that, you know, it's all their needs and yet it complies.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
I know you're busy. Thanks for all you do for the I.
Thank you.
Any mayouts? Close this portion of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting are regular meeting, a longer second. We'll have coffee in the addition or building.
Under the, under the, the discussion about the meeting before that, that I made the motion to accept, there was a concern, I don't know how you remember all this stuff, I can't recall it. About whether the word "for" or "on" was used, and after going through this whole thing, I asked Phil if I could listen to the tape, and the word "for" was used. And I would like to have that corrected to "for," not just having a thing after it that says the page states "on" or "for," so that it actually reflects that. I'm not particularly concerned about this incident, but I am concerned about questions that are set in. Or something. Do you mind, Kelly?
No, Phil played the tape for me, and that's perfectly fine.
But I just-
Are you making a motion on that?
Down the road.
First, just a minute, a minute.
Okay.
I don't have any other notes.
I need a motion to do a little- Got it.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. We all have copies of the bills, I added them, ours and-
We have no additions or deletions.
Thank you.
Make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion?
I just have two questions, Arson. I guess it's the 1, 2, 3, fourth page in, we have a couple of bills with an amount of zero, is that-
What happens with the program if you put the wrong vendor in?
Okay.
You're not allowed to delete that vendor, so you have to put it in as a zero bill.
And then you put the correct vendor in?
Correct.
Okay.
Check the balance.
I prefer that we can have it just deleted, but according to them, they said that's the audit control way of doing that.
I'm sorry?
It says according to our software people, they said that's the audit control way of doing that.
I just have-
I would just prefer to just delete the whole vendor, but-
Thanks, Arson.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have two letters, one is from Mayor State Police Troop Headquarters from Peter Person Major. It's addressed to Robert Craig, Chief of Police, Dear Chief Craig, in clause, please find the results of the 15th enforcement wave of the Buffalo, New York campaign from May 24th to the 6th of June 2004. Thanks to the combined efforts of all participating agencies, the campaign continues to achieve high compliance with our state's mandatory seam restraint use clause, and is one of the most successful highway safety programs in New York state's history. Statewide, New York's safety belt use rate is now among the nation's highest, exceeding 9% for the second time in as many years. It is my personal belief that together we have saved many lives, and we have had a positive impact on the people we serve here in the North Country. I extend my sincere gratitude for your participation and dedication, and I look forward to working together in the future. Kind of personal regards, I remain Peter Person Major. And the second item we have is a letter from the Rousas Point Champlain Historical Society, was signed by Mary Rassico Secretary, it's addressed to the mayor and trustees. The Rousas Point Champlain Historical Society would like to thank you for your support and help in the success of our fake de-dans concert 2004, held recently at the Rousas Point Civic Center. We are most appreciative of the assistance that your staff at the Civic Center provided for us. They were always there when we needed them, and no task seemed impossible. The dance troops that performed on July 29th are eager to come back to our community. It goes without saying that working together is a benefit to all of us. The D and H Railroad Station will someday be a building we can be proud of, and will be a museum where history can be remembered and enjoyed in our fire village residents and members of the Northern Tier. His sign, sincerely, Mary Rassico. All ahead.
Thank you, sir. To the point of the mayor, to the holder trustees, and I have nothing to report tonight. Yes, sir. Trustee Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First is a request for an executive session to discuss office personnel.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee McManus. Trustee Benfield.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Request an executive session to discuss electric personnel.
I'll second that.
Motion by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore. And the mayor votes aye. I voted aye on a lot of them, too.
Next item is a discussion following, a discussion from the last meeting concerning a village logo. And we've been hither and yon on this whole idea since the last meeting, and I know Phil has had some people working on some ideas as to the kind of logo we might have, and we're just trying to keep it as simple as we can. We're no further along than we were, except that Melissa said that there is some money in one of our grants to spend a bunch of money to create a logo. I would prefer, if there's a way we can do it without spending the money for that particular thing, if we can, you know, 1,200, 1,500?
Janet Kennedy said she figured 1,500, but about that, but that, you know, that was not as part of a, I think the idea would be, we just ask the consultants to do it as part of those design standards and guidelines.
Yeah.
Without any extra. And that was her suggestion.
Well, I'm not ready to commit that amount of money for that at this point. We may end up having to do that for another meeting or so, but, does anybody have any further ideas after the last meeting as to what they'd like to see on the logo?
I guess my, my only thought would be, the difficulty in my mind comes from the fact that we are looking for an all-purpose logo that can go on equipment, signs, website, what have you, maybe even village stationery in the future. And I just think that maybe that's gonna be our biggest difficulty in coming up with something, something that works for every purpose.
Exactly.
And I'm not sure whether that is even the right way to go about it, you know, maybe it's better to have a slightly modified version, let's say, for a road sign, or a welcome to Rousas Point sign on the side of the road that would be larger. You know, I don't, I just hate to try to restrict ourselves to something that can be as flexible as fitting on a very small part of the webpage versus being on a four-foot square sign. I think that we're really boxing ourselves in if we're trying to look for something that can be expanded or condensed, if needed. So maybe we need to look for more than one.
Maybe we do have to. I know on the webpage, there are some other things that are being considered, too, right, Phil?
We're doing law, we should have the original, by the end of the week, hopefully, we should have a mock-up ready to go, and if all goes well, unless we have a problem actually, the web designer actually getting it online, we're hoping to be live by the 1st of September.
Not necessarily including the logo?
No, there's not gonna be a logo on the website. We're gonna have on our front page or on the top of every page of the website, we're gonna have the village seal, and right, temporarily, we're gonna have a picture of the Fort Montgomery in kind of an oval shape, just to start off, so we have something that looks aesthetically pleasing, or at least that we think is, anyway.
But I think you're right, Kelly, we don't want something that's full of clumsy-
No, and I think that, you know, different kinds of logos and different kinds of drawings are appropriate for different situations. And I don't know that you want the same logo on the website that we would have on a road sign. You know, I think it wouldn't necessarily look the best.
It might just not.
So I think maybe we should decide where we're in need of placing a logo, and then look at how many different versions of that we might have to end up with.
But we definitely need new village welcome signs, you know, next year. And that's certainly one of the places we want them, and we want, we want it to kind of, I think, to kind of be very general in terms of what Rousas Point represents.
And I think you know, you want, if you have more than one version, you want them to fit together, you want them to make some sense, but I think if we looked at where we're looking to place them, and then, then we can determine how many different styles we need.
Well, we're still gonna try and get some, we call sketches, put together locally, and then we may have to go, to get something very professionally done, we may have to go the direction of, of the big city consultant, or something like that. So, okay. Anybody else? Okay, I would like to request authorization from Melissa McManus to attend the New York Planning Federation Annual Conference at the Hilton Lake Plaza, 9:20 through 9:21. Actually, the conference runs four days, but the meet event that she's interested in is only for, for two days, and I request to, to longer to attend that conference.
I'll second that.
Motion by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? And being no discussion, all in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, motion carried.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
The first item I have tonight involves an authorization to travel. We have an invitation which was sent to Tom Reed at the Wake Water Building Plant for a Gorman Roof Factory Seminar, having to do with Seaword Equipment Company. They say it's going to be a very educational and beneficial trip. I guess that they have a number of demonstrations that will be done on, on to deal equipment. And I believe that Tom Reed and Aaron Jarvis will be traveling out there on the 16th and the 17th of September. So we need to give Tommy the authorization to go ahead and take this trip. He seemed to be very interested in it, and hopefully, it'll work out very well for both of them.
Where are they going?
Pardon me?
Where are they going, Albany, Binghamton, Rochester, or Buffalo?
I thought they were going, is it Albany?
They're going to Ohio.
Oh, it's Ohio? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And my understanding is that the company is picking up the tab-
Oh, yes, it is all expenses paid. That's correct. Yeah, it's just the authorization to give him the time to go ahead.
That's what I wondered, why we didn't have an authorization?
Yeah, I, I-
No, 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 it's all expenses paid for, both of them, and-
You put that in a motion?
Yes.
Second. Moved by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the second item I have, and actually ties into the third item, is an update on the upcoming sewer project. We had an extremely productive committee meeting last Wednesday. Seems like things have, will belong very well, according to both John Carr and Aaron Jarvis, and essentially, all of the details have been ironed out with the BEC and EFC, and I think that we are just about ready to go ahead and authorize going out for bid. John, do you have anything to add, seeing as Alan's not here?
You know, I follow the errands tied up on every other Wednesday, so I'm filling in for any items. You know, things are progressing as discussed in the committee meeting. We have been working with Doug's people, getting test pits excavated around various roofs, and meeting with people as far as easements and that sort of thing. Things are going pretty well, but the regulatory funding agencies had very minor suggestions on the claims and specifications, and the, it would appear to us, as though it's kind of advertised from there.
And the time schedule that we had thrown around would be, hopefully, to allow us to award a bid on the 20th of September, at our meeting on the 20th of September. So we have a, kind of a tight deadline, and, but hopefully, it will work out. It would be scheduled to be open on September 14th, and hopefully, awarded at the meeting on the 20th. So I guess if we're all set with that, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to go out to bid for the sewer project upgrades. And I believe you all have a copy of that, that Phil left for us in our desk.
I'll second.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Moore. Is there any discussion? The roll call, vote, sir? Roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Array, array. Off and running.
Okay, I have one other item tonight, and I apologize for not passing these out with the other meeting at 6 o'clock. I had the opportunity to speak with Bob Craig about different ideas that he and I threw around in terms of scheduling. One of the things that I know with, with school beginning again, that he and I find it very difficult if I have something to discuss with him, that our schedules don't match, or he's not in his office, or I'm in the office. So let me just give each of you one of these that he actually found for us, and just to give you something to think about for the next meeting, something that he thought could be left in the office, so that if there was a request of his department, it would be very easy for him to respond. You know, sometimes, if you're looking for Aaron, or you're looking for Tommy, or you're looking for Bob, they aren't in the office quite frequently, or their schedules just don't match ours. So it's just a very basic form that he and I thought might be very useful. They could be left in the front counter, fill an out, leave it for him, and he promised to reply to us very, very quickly. So it's just something that, if you would like to think about until next time, we could maybe discuss whether or not you think that's a good idea, or whether or not you think it would work, but I know he was very positive about it, and I think it would be very useful for myself, especially with school starting again, and not being able to have access to the office readily as, as I would like to. So just something for you to look over for next time. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Thank you trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, I just have a couple items on my agenda tonight. First of all, I'd like to make the motion to, for a travel authorization for Marie Quain to go to electronic filing training at Club Community College on nine nine of this year.
Thank you.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, any discussion? There being no discussion, all of the favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and the second item I have is the authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to go out to bid for the substation fence and installation. I didn't get any paperwork on that, Phil.
We're waiting for the draft to come in from Mr. Wilson, I understand. Hopefully, we'll have it within a week. We put this down, so when we get that information in, we're not going to have to wait until September to do it. We're just trying to preempt this whole thing.
Well, make that motion.
I'll second that. Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckel, and for your information, this is a must, a very big must. That fence has got to be up before we can tie in that one hundred and fifteen thousand bolt.
Where's the fence going over to?
It's going around the perimeter a little bit. The whole thing. It's going to come straight off of, on the main site, straight out to the road, ten feet off the road, right down the property line, straight over to two row engagement, that's it. It's one, two, and a little bit on third side.
How high is that?
Eight-foot fence with one-foot barbed wire.
It's just for security, because man, there are safety...
Not so much security, we don't want nobody touching a hundred and fifteen thousand bolt. It do make a risky curve.
You don't want anybody sabotaging the electric equipment.
No. Any other discussion, roll call vote. Trustee Huckel, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
That's all I have on my agenda tonight.
Thank you trustee Jefferson, trustee Moore.
Yes, I got one thing. Village Park lot behind Old Mike's Cafe, you know, we've been, Village has put lights, you know, let it put stuff up. It was at a twenty-degree angle, so what Sandy agreed on is to take ten feet, us leave ten feet for that work, and she okayed it. So I'd like to do now is make a motion to authorize the clerk to have the village attorney do whatever paperwork's necessary to make it available.
Second. Motion made by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Huckel, any discussion? Another roll call vote? Oh, good. No other discussion, all of the favor, vote by your usual side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I got.
And one thing for you, and for the rest of the board. Good news. I talked with the chief water plant operator today. We are going to be shutting off the old water tank this week, and strictly on a new tank. Leventre seems to be working out very well. So that will probably almost end up that project, eh, John?
Next couple of months.
What was the grading they were doing up there today? I saw somebody up there with a bulldozer grading around the tank.
I believe that may have been hand-marked subcontractor, you know, gravel the roadway and a couple of little...
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, other reports, Phil?
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Arsène?
I just want to report that I received a letter on Friday from Champlain National Bank. That's where we have our village credit cards. Apparently Visa is doing, as a result of the mandate that rapidly increases the number of compromised accounts forward through Visa MasterCard Network, your identity theft, they're changing our agreements. What they want is, right now, our village credit cards just have Village of Ross's Point on them. Now they want the Village of Ross's Point with the employee's name on it.
So you're going to have to get one for everyone for the board? And how are you going to do that? I don't understand the board.
We can do it. I think it's something you almost have to do. We need a credit card to operate, unless you want to establish a cash, I'm speaking for Arsène, unless you want to establish a cash advance account, which would be substantial, you're going to create a tremendous amount of paperwork for the office every time someone was in travel status. There again, I'm speaking for him, but I would suggest that the board, myself, Arsène, and those people in travels, that typically are in travel status, your department heads, Melissa, that have the credit card. I know it's going to be kind of a pain to have fifteen, eighteen cards, but it's simpler than maintaining a cash advance account.
Well, I understand that.
That's just my thought.
I'm just thinking that, you know, it's going to be a nightmare with all the cards.
How's it going to work if the fire department uses it sometimes too?
It's whoever's name is on the card, and then of course, it's the neighbor who uses it.
Yeah, but different people go for different trains sometimes, and it's...
See, that's what I'm saying.
I would have to say, you know, I think if the board could set the parameters of who should initially get the card, and then down the road, if we get an odd man out, so to speak, someone that isn't typically like Jason Juno goes, and Bill goes for training, well, we would have one for them because they're going for their apprenticeship. And if you have certain ones from the fire department that go, I realize there may be some odd ones, but in a case like that, you'd almost have to plan on an out-of-pocket or a cash advance, which are not going to be, it wouldn't be the norm.
You don't have one just nailed for the fire department, from the village?
No, have to have actual person's name, that's the whole problem with us. And they're not just the only bank doing it. Another bank that we dealt with before is basically doing it the same way. It's not just this carte blanche, Village of Ross's Point card anymore.
Do they have to pay individual cards?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to pay like twenty-five dollars for an individual card?
Well, this, this particular one is twenty-five dollars in account.
Account?
In accounts of Village of Ross's Point. But what I'm going to do is, I think I'm going to go to another bank, because I know I can get a better rate than what we have right now. Problem is, is that I kind of let the board notify that we're going to have, we're going to be allowed a credit card for a certain period of time, because this letter I received on Friday, and they need it back by this coming Friday in order for this to go through by September tenth. And our cards are no longer any good as of August twentieth. So they're not giving very much time here. And you have to go through, and you have to give them a list, and you have to get all the signatures for all the people who are going to have a card, and so on and so forth. But, you know, you just can't do that in a week.
Do we have a reimbursement policy if someone uses their own personal card?
As long as they go through the travel authorization.
Okay.
I mean, if you get approved to go on a trip and want to use your card, that's fine, just bring them a receipt and we'll pay for it.
But again, there you're going, you know, you've got to wait, you've got to wait.
But it looks like, it looks like we're going to be spending... I agree with Phil, it's going to be a lot better, or easier than keeping a travel account, but it's also going to spend a lot more time playing around with these cards, you know, when you have change of officials and change of employees, so...
Do you expect that if you try a different location, that's what you said before, right? You thought that you were, you might try to switch the card over anyway? Are they, are they still using the same provision?
Yes, because I tried to do that only because of the fact that the other bank I went to aimed at the interest rates that they were giving us for the lower rate that we had now. But I didn't want to do that, have, you know, put in every, each individual's name, but now, now I'm being forced to do that.
You know, is it specific just to Visa, or is it one with a different type of card?
It says Visa MasterCard Network, it says.
I'm sorry. American Express.
I don't know.
And one of the problems too of these local banks is they don't give them the card, and like our card's a Champlain National Bank on it, it's not really through Champlain National Bank, it's through another, they sell it out to somebody else.
You could try Pecro, Canada.
Have you checked with Nikon to see what other municipalities might be doing, Arsène?
No.
Maybe that wouldn't be a bad idea.
I wouldn't be surprised, Kelly, that everybody is getting hit with this because of the fraud on credit cards.
Right, we have a relatively small number of employees, you know, based with a large number of employees, maybe they have a better idea, and it wouldn't hurt to try.
We shouldn't be hit with very much interest anyway, because this stuff doesn't drive on. If we approve it, and then we submit bills...
We haven't paid any interest, have we? We have a couple times. Depends on the beauty falls. We have, you know, I'm not talking very much more.
But then cards just stay at the village office until they're needed. The person don't care what them all the time.
I know.
Accounting nightmare.
So I just want to let you hold that.
You're not a bearer of good news tonight, sir.
Nobody can go on any trips on the road until we get this straightened out.
See that, Melissa? You can't even go, you've got a hovel.
Well, you can't even use your credit card, you're wrong.
I guess what I want to be sure of is, do we have the board's approval to secure cards for those people that typically travel? Is that all right with you folks to do it that way?
Well, we have a whole lot of choice there. Yeah, we don't have a whole lot of a choice here.
Want to make a motion on that, Phil?
Well, you know, I just want to make sure you don't have any, you know, conflict with it. And do you want to approve those names that we submit, or can we, in conjunction with the departments, come up with the means we're going to need the cards for how you want to handle it?
Actually, the way I look at it doesn't make any difference, but what I'm saying is they're going to have to sign out the card anyway. So cards are going to be held at the village office, so there's a control on it, whoever's names on it.
We will check that, I like your idea, probably.
Check the top on it, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, I think what you're saying is someone never travels, there's no sense in getting that personally.
I agree. Again, I'm leaving it up to you people.
But I do like your suggestion, we will call Nikon to see if they have another possible, possible way of doing this, make it, you know, much, much easier.
Whatever Melissa make up, we're going to have to amend it anyway, because there's going to be people coming...
Oh, there's going to be, the basic concept of what we're trying to do aside, unless we get an easier way of doing it, we just want to be sure it was all right.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I have.
Good thing, thank you. Good guess, good day, I don't need a word on that. Okay, Dundee, or John, sorry. I'm sitting there first.
Basically, the only other report I have at hand is that there's a few minor little things in the water system project, particularly contract number two, or number one, that need to be addressed. Hopefully, that can occur within the next couple, three weeks. The electrical contract is being closed out, as well as the general contract. Contract number two has a couple of minor punch list items to be addressed. The project hopefully is pretty well winding down. We did make a submission, myself and Phil, to the funding agency, of the kind of minority women's business efforts by the contractors. We hope to have that final report done by September first. And a couple other little, real small things that are coordinating with Darian as far as calibrations in the new telemetry system. We found out the existing one is pretty much at its end of its life, it's quite inaccurate, and no one is providing any of that.
Thank you, John. Dundee?
Tomorrow, we'll be out doing surveying for the new substation fence, so that will be laid out tomorrow.
Okay, and when you get done, tell me how many feet of fence I need, please.
Okay, we'll do that.
And that will, that will take care of just about the specifications we need to go out to bid.
Yeah.
Eric?
Yeah.
Thank you. John, Melissa, you have the floor.
Thank you, George. I wanted to start off by thanking the board for allowing me to attend the Albany workshop on the Main Street Grant. It was extremely informative, definitely was worth the drive. Victoria Zinser Johnson from Friends of the North Country also attended, and it allowed us to sit down and work through the issues that we needed to for the Main Street Grant application. With, I know we've been running late, if I, what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is just to quickly run through the key points on that grant, and then ask for your approval to proceed with the grant application. Friends of the North Country will apply as what's called a local plan administrator. They're the people that will do the nuts and bolts rehab administration in downtown. We will apply as a partner in that, that grant application, as the municipality. This will be at no cost to the village, there'll be no cost for the application, other than my time that I will assist them in getting the application together. At the funding workshop, they suggested a two-block target area. And this is something, Junior, that you had brought up at the last meeting, what would we choose? We certainly have, we could choose anything we would like, but that gentleman around the workshop must have said two-block target area twenty times if he said it once. They really would like a very tight target, so you can really show results, and they'd like the mixed-use buildings, the downtown storefront retail and the residential up above. With that, I'm suggesting that we consider State Street to Chapman on the Main Street, on Lake Street, as the, pretty much the heart of the downtown, where we have a lot of the old storefronts with the residences upstairs. What we're proposing is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant application for building renovations. The first step is facade work, that would be to do the fronts of the buildings. People who have the facade works done, facade work done could also apply for a fifty thousand dollar whole building renovation grant. That hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is the state share, which needs to be matched by the local share. And in, in our case, that would be the property owner who is getting the improvements done to their building. With the exception of the IEEP monies that the board has discussed, whatever percentage you decide to use, the rest of the money would come from the property owner, including the administration. And so we're looking at really zero cost, cash cost to the village on this. It would all be done through the Friends of the North Country and maybe the property owner. At this time, if the board authorizes me to proceed, we'll begin the process of actually contacting the property owners in the target area to find out who is interested, what kind of work they'd like to do, the facade work, or also perhaps the building renovations. And just, so people who are hearing this will hopefully get the word out, that doesn't just mean building inside, that can be handicapped accessibility. I know, John, this is something you and I had spoken about one day in the village office. If any of the property owners wanted to adjust the front of the property to make it accessible to people in wheelchairs, this, this program would pay for that as part of the fifty-fifty split. If, well, we're also looking at coordinating with the quality community design standards , so the facades, the fronts of the buildings will work in with the design standards that the consultant comes up with. The twenty-five thousand dollars to make up the two hundred thousand is a hundred percent streetscape grant application, and this is money that would come directly to the village to buy signs, banners, landscaping, really, other than pavement, we can probably use it for whatever we like. Unfortunately, no sidewalks, no parking lots, as they were, we were told. They wanted something, you know, more along the beautification aspect. I had a question when I wrote your memo, I wasn't sure about the ten percent administrative cost on that. I spoke to Victoria today, and she agreed to allow us to administer it here locally, and so there would be no cost to the village for the twenty-five thousand, that would be pure grant. The only other thing that I would request is that the board authorize me to assist in the process, both in terms of preparing the grant application and helping Friends however I can in the administration. Particularly, I think, in coordinating this to the whole quality community plan that we're working on, that, I think that would be very important. So what I'm looking for is, and I'm okay to go ahead with the target area, with my time, and, you know, permission to actually approach the property owners. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Now, when you say from State to Chapman, do you got to have a Lake Street address? Or could you go down Chapman a little bit, or...
I think we'd be looking at only properties that actually have their fronts, their end red on Lake Street.
So you got that Lake Street...
Right, right.
When this gentleman was talking about a two-block target area, what about the size of the block? Is he thinking of something that might be larger than what we have? In other words, if we, you still have a tight area, if you pushed it out a little beyond that, is that a possibility at all? Because two blocks here may not be two blocks in Plattsburgh, or in Watertown, or Elton.
I'd really like to see it started in five streets.
Because you got the old miners building.
Because we, you know, we're not, we're talking two blocks, but I would say probably two small blocks.
Not city blocks.
Right, well, that's true, that's true. We could look at, we could certainly look at that, at doing that. So Pratt to Chapman is what you'd be thinking of?
Well, I would, I would probably go as far as the village office.
Okay. The one, another factor that we need... The one, another factor that we need to keep in mind as we do this is the income qualifications. And this, I think, might affect how far you want to go to the South. The median household income in the target area has to be 34,000, approximately 34,400 and some dollars is the state median. Okay? And we have to hit, I'm sorry, that's 80% of the state median. We have to be below that. And so, we need to make sure that as we look at the area, we're, we're not adding in perhaps residential tenants that might push that out of, out of the income.
Are you talking about tenants or property owners?
The, the people who actually reside in the building, the tenants, or if it's owner occupied, you know, their incomes would average in too. And I was, when I started looking at this, the only census data that you can get is what's called a block group, and it includes most of the northern part of the village, pretty much from Chapman up, and it also goes way up into Maple Street. And so, that area has about a $36,000 median income. It's too high. And so, I, I-
I think it should be checked regardless. I, I think you should check all of the places all the way down to Liberty. I just, I, I don't see how you can stop at Chapman. I, I just don't, I think you need to check those figures. When it happens to drive up to median, then you deal with it then.
Well, what you have to do is you have to do an income survey of the people directly. There's no way to get census data.
Right. So-
The whole exception, though, we're talking about all residences, with the exception of the Harrison building.
Or you have Sandy's Deli.
Well, that would be, would that be considered Chapman?
Maybe not. Maybe not.
It's been on the side of Chapman here.
Yeah.
Same thing with Harrison.
The whole Sandy's Deli there, you've got, what, former Marments there, too.
So, I, I just, I would find it very difficult to just pick out that two-block target area without, I think that's very, in a community this size, with a downtown size that we have, to me, that seems very restrictive. I don't know. You know, what about the people who are just outside that area?
And, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. I do. I, my only concern would be to, we, anytime you have grant funding, it's hard to draw those lines, but you want to go with the funding guidelines to ensure that you're funded.
Oh, I understand that.
And, and the, you know, the, the residential buildings would not, the single-family homes that are in any of those areas would not be eligible for this. This would be for the, you know, the multi-use buildings.
Do they have to be multi-use, or could, or could they just be an apartment building with more?
An apartment building is, they, they didn't address that directly. I think if it's in the target area, it might be able to be used, but they're looking to rehab the multi-use buildings. So, the more multi-use buildings you have in the area, I think the stronger the grant application is going to score. So, but, so I'm, I'm trying to think how this would work. So, I, we would, we would have to survey everyone and check the incomes.
I guess if you're looking at multi-use buildings, then Sandy's Deli would be the only one there. And Harrison would be a multi-use building. And so, but certainly the Deli would, with the Marments.
Well, why don't you check with Paul or whoever and see whether or not we could, because, like Kelly says, our blocks are fairly small.
Right.
See if we can. We're certainly not going to do something like that to mess up our chances of getting a, a, a-
Right. Okay. I'll, I'll check into that and see what they think.
Because my second question that went along with that was, when you're, when you're contacting the property owners to determine the level of interest in the program, if in that two-block target area, there's a very low percentage or low level of interest, do you then expand the target area? Well, if you can, or, I mean, how does that work?
Right. Actually, I talked to Victoria about that today. She suggested that we put in a little clause to allow some flexibility, that if we were not able to use the funds within the target area, we would expand it to the immediate area around it, just in, in that, in case that did happen. If, if we do, if we're, you're looking at about $175,000 in grant funds, if you get even one property that wants to do whole building renovation and facade, that's 60,000 right there. So, and it's, you know, 10,000 per facade. So, it won't take long, if we get a couple of buildings, it won't take long to go through that 175,000.
So, they automatically get the max? They get, they get the 60,000?
In other words, it's not, it's not looking at the number of interested property owners and then divvying up the money? Is that- Oh, yes, it is. I mean, people could apply. They could. And, and that's actually the methodology that Victoria recommended, and I think makes a lot of sense. What we're going to do now is just contact for general interest, so we have some numbers to put in the grant. But if we're awarded, we would actually go out and have a public information session, invite everyone, so everyone has equal access to sign up for those, those funds. So, so, so I just want to, so we're thinking from Pratt to-
Village office.
Village office. Okay.
If possible.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Can we have all this in one motion, Phil?
Harvey, you want a word?
I was going to ask you, where, permission for Melissa to continue with the grant application, and also to work with Friends of the North Country.
And that's the next one.
And we'll do the, our, yeah, separately. Okay? Is that it for that one?
I, that sounds, that sounds great. And then maybe you can give me a, a little bit, after you take care of that motion, a little more direction about what to do in terms of, between now and the next board meeting on the target area, because we'll probably need a decision on that in the, in a matter of a week or so.
Could, is, is it possible, and maybe it's not, so just tell me if it isn't, is it possible to survey for interest?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
Second. Okay. That's my question. Is it possible to, to survey the property owners for their interest and then try to find the target area from that? Or is that not allowed?
I think we, I think we probably, I, the difficulty I can see is, let's say you get someone who's interested, but because of the income levels, they're going to be, have to be out of the target area. Or you end up with a pattern where you have people interested on both ends and no one in the middle.
Well, then, isn't the target area then the whole thing, and the people in the middle just didn't take advantage of it?
Yeah. I mean, you, this, you, the board in the application, as long as we get Friends of the North Country to agree, can choose whatever you want in terms of the target area. That is something that as we write the grant, we define. The question is, what do you use, and how do you draw that line? What, what's the best way to do it? And, um-
With my understanding, when we were at the training, Melissa, and they talked briefly about this, that the target areas are defined because of, you know, the max grants, 175,000. I mean, they, these weren't the figures, but this was the basic concept. That, this is how you start it. And then as future grants in subsequent years, then you would expand your district. That was my understanding of it. This is just the start. Is that my understanding?
I, I would hope that that's the way it would work, you know, assuming that the state continues with the funding, that, that we might be able to do that. I'm just trying to work through how this will work. So, I would go out and I'll contact Friends of the North Country and, and get their okay to, you know, that they're willing to work with an additional, maybe block and a half, I guess, we'd be talking. Really, it's not a huge amount. And then, we'd look at doing an income survey by street address. And that's a confidential thing, but it'll have to be by street address so that we know where the properties are. And then, I guess we can look at how the averages come in and, and decide by that. And if, if they do come in below the median, then we would go ahead and, and keep that target area. Does that sound workable? I'm just trying to think this through.
Are you, so when, when you had, had written about the two-block target area, are we basically forcing you to redo something that you've already done? In other words, have you already checked the incomes in those two blocks?
No. No, I have not.
So, you'd have to do that anyway?
Oh, absolutely.
So, we're really not adding on, we're not, we're really only adding on a, a small piece to that, is that correct? In terms of checking to make sure that they would be eligible to be in the target area?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I've got it.
Any other discussion? All in favor of what they use to sign a by?
By.
Those opposed, vote for carry. Second motion, sir.
I would also like to make a motion that Melissa be granted permission to continue the request proposal. And not-
That, I think that sounds good. As we discussed in our earlier meeting, we'll go out with the new comprehensive request for proposal.
Second thought. Moved by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Javerson. Any discussion? Any no discussion, or better vote by use of sign of by?
By.
Those opposed, motion carried. Is that it?
Just thinking as, should we end up with the target area either Friends of the North Country saying, no, we want to keep it in the two blocks, or the income's coming in too high? Is it okay then just to revert back to the, the two blocks that we proposed with?
It's, you have to.
Okay.
You don't, you don't want to rush, not even, but, 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 grant.
They're coming, they're coming early next week to, to take a look at everything. And so, I think they're, they want to get started immediately. So, if that's okay, that'll be the fallback position. The other thing that I would like to request is really when I go out and talk to the property owners, we've talked about the IEEP monies, and I wasn't sure if the board had a target amount in mind. I know it depends on what it can appropriately be used for. That's the first thing. It has to be-
It has to be energy conservation.
Okay.
And also, I think there've got to be some strings attached to it, that they're going to do other things, other than just, just get new windows and doors. You know, I mean, there's got to be some type of, I mean, and I don't even know what it should include at this point.
Well-
But, but that you, like, like Pooh was answered at that time, they restored the facade to its original character.
Exactly.
We have a meaty job with Bill Berry on the 31st.
Well, yeah. Bill wouldn't have anything to do with that part. That would be a problem.
Oh, yeah. What you said, but I mean, I think you can give us the guidelines on, on the money part.
Yeah.
I, I was wondering if the board would be comfortable with, say, maybe saying, no more than 10% of the total project cost, that you would be willing to contribute IEEP?
Yeah, I understand, Melissa. It has to be directly related to energy conservation.
Right.
A lot of the low-y glass on the windows, probably.
Low-y glass, insulated doors.
I mean, but Bill Berry told me, when I brought the idea to him, was, he was ecstatic. He thought it was a great idea. But what he wants is, is you don't want this store to say, oh, yeah, I'm going ahead with it. And then six months later, say this store. He wants a block.
Get it done.
He wants, they want to bid because you get better pricing. He, they will bid the windows, let's say the big windows. They will do all the bidding. We do nothing. They just take the specifications, they bid it, it will be shipped to us, or it'll be up to the store order to see, or the person coming, or to install it. All right? They pay the bill. We never, we don't see anything.
Okay. So, we'd actually be contributing the materials that they would need, so, okay. Now, is there anything through the municipal electric to do an energy audit on those buildings? Or is that something that I should ask Friends of the North Country to think about?
Well, we are working towards something on that. Next, next, Wednesday, I think, we've got a guide coming in from Pear, I think it's Pear, infrared cameras, that will go right and you'll take a building, shine a camera on it, shows you where the leakage is, give you a picture of where it's leaking, leaking. And, and I care, IEEP money will buy this for us, but it could be a multi-use camera. They'll be using our substation to see if we got bad connections, that show up and heat. Fire department, they'll be able to use it in a, in a, in a building that once the fire's out, they can scan the walls and see if there's fire behind the walls. We'll be able to use it for energy on it.
Okay. Sounds good. So, I'm sorry.
It's hard to do that in the summertime, though, ain't it? It's kind of hard to do that in the summertime, to find hotspots on a, on a building.
They claim they work. We're going to find out Wednesday.
Either a fire bin, or just the heat loss coming out? The heat loss coming out of a building.
We go to the inside. See the heat coming in?
Yeah. I know it's good up at the substation to find hotspots and stuff like that, but, I don't know.
But then, the technology has changed dramatically.
Well, I imagine that.
Dramatically.
In the winter, when it's cold, if you took a picture, you could see where the- Oh, yeah. I'd do that at my house.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. About fifteen, well, fifteen, twenty years ago, out riding ice boat.
What I'm saying is, the technology is completely different.
Oh, yeah.
What you do, just tighten it up under recommendations, like, you know, change the windows?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Shows all the hotspots, or, different colors, you know, and stuff like that, coming on. And it shows the picture of your house, or whatever. It shows the heat coming out, or whatever, different color, blue, yellow, or red.
The energy audit thing, we might be allowed.
Okay. So, is it, is it okay to, to say that to the Friends and of the North Country and to the property owners, that the village will, where, where appropriate, where it can be justified under this program, you're willing to do up to whatever percentage you feel is-
I don't think we can give it a-
Dollar amount you want it, because every, every building is going to be different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to set a cap on that, or, or, for example, or just want to leave it open-ended?
Let me put it to you this way, it'll be up to the board whether or not we fund the whole thing or part of it.
Okay.
Once we, you, once we see the figures.
Okay. That sounds, that, that sounds-
Shouldn't we have some sort of a standard, though? Because you don't, you, I think you want to be really careful with, with making sure that whatever you do among the various property owners is equitable or fair.
They can standard, very simple, it's very easy to standard, energy conservation.
I understand that, George, but let's suppose that one person needs 25,000 and one person needs 10,000. Do we fund all of the 10 and, and half of the, I mean, how, how do you make sure that we're doing it for property?
I think we have to do that case by case. I think that-
I think we do. I really do. I think we got to do it all together, because somebody might need 25, like, like those huge windows in, uh, those buildings, the old pharmacy. Those, those are huge, huge windows in there. Whereas someplace else, you've got some, you know, or McDonald's buildings got huge windows, and some other places, like Sandy's, Old Times, got smaller windows.
But in other words, if you capped it at, at a percentage, you would be giving more to the person with the larger expense, because the percentage of the higher number would be higher.
That person could have to pay more and put the windows in.
That's right. But our contribution would be as the same percentage. I mean, just, I, I mean-
Melissa, do we have to make a decision on, on this part tonight? No, we don't.
No, just-
You see, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to point out here is that, certainly industry in here was given $45,000, that was where it started. Big, car's blank.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're saying?
Was given $45,000 where it started.
Okay.
Energy, energy conservation started. Another was given $7,000 to do another project. The, the price differs in what you're doing.
Right. And the, but these projects are not necessarily apples and oranges, like you might be describing there. You're, you're talking about people who are all in a target area, who are basically, they may have different things that their individual properties require, but they're all part of the same grant program. And I just want to make sure that whatever we do for one, it's fair and equitable when you compare it to the other property owners.
Well, they're all going to, my assumption is, they're all going to get the same kind of windows, the same kind of doors, except that some will be different size than the others. That's what I'm guessing.
Okay.
But, but, you know, we have these restrictions to get any of them, like restoration of the facade, to the, you know, that kind of thing. So, that, that will temper a lot of that.
Sure, and what I can do is, I can ask Victoria what she'd like, and from, you know, how she'd like this written up from the board for the next meeting, how she'll want to put it in the application. And I'll also have a formal resolution of support for you for the next meeting, for the grant application.
Well, I, I have some misgivings about putting anything about the IEEP money into that, you know.
Like we're speaking.
Into documents, it's out to everybody. We know it's, we know we have this fund, and we know that we have, it's used for energy conservation, but I'm not sure that's the right thing to do. Before we do anything, I'd like to check with Bill Berry on that.
Well, he's gonna be here next week.
Yeah, he'll be here on 31st.
I don't think he's going to have an issue with that.
Well.
You know, as long as it's acceptable, and you are right, I mean, there's going to be different size windows, different size doors, but to follow the quality community, I'm guessing, but you're going to want the motif, you know, the basic facade. I mean, you're not going to want one style window different each place, but they're going to be different sizes, different, whatever. So, one of the things that my clients from Honeywell, that, as you know, is part of the program, I wouldn't be surprised if they let us do our own, our own pricing on that for various vendors because of the uniqueness of each building and how it's going to be We'll stay up to see when it comes down, how much interest there is and how many will be involved. But I, and one of the things, and I think you have to realize, too, is you have, you pay money, but you have to realize that at some point, you have to have a cap. And you can't, say you're going to spend 200,000 on windows. I mean, you're going to have to set a figure and then work it back from there depending on, on the interest.
We have to put an overall gap over the whole thing.
Right, so you spend 50,000 or 75,000 of IEEP money, I mean, that's something you're going to have to look at.
I think income might be a problem, too. If you only got 35,000 now, I think that's going to disqualify a lot of people. I mean, it seems low to me.
That, that would be for the, just the tenants who are actually living in the, in the building. And it's the average, so we'll, we'll have to find out. I'll get some more information for you on that in terms of what they.
Any chance you can get some of that to us before reading, Melissa?
Oh, absolutely. I, I'll talk to Victoria and ask what she, you know, what she'd like in writing. I guess I'm, I was also just interested in terms of approaching the property owners, you know, how much, is it fair to say that the village has conservation monies and they're willing to assist if they can with part of the local.
I assume we're going to need guidelines and whatever.
Okay, very good, thank you. And just thank you for approving the request for the planning and zoning meeting.
No problem. Anything else? Anybody else want to address the board at this time?
Go ahead, thanks.
Fire truck. Did you have any bites on the fire truck yet?
Not yet. They haven't been out in the magazine yet.
How?
We advertised it in the magazine.
Oh, because I have a suggestion, if you could, well, I don't know what you want for it, or whatever, but they got that big auction over at Farners and stuff like that. I talked to them a little bit about it, and you could probably bring it over there and set a price, you know, and you could put it in that auction that day, August, I think, 8th or 7th?
Or 8th, that's gone by.
Or September, I'm sorry. Or August 27th, I think it is. August 27th.
Now, we've, we've paid, what, a couple hundred dollars to advertise that in the magazine. And that'd be out, what, September's issue? I'm not sure.
No, they didn't give me a date.
Bill sent you a copy of it.
Right, they did say, we did receive today, one bid on the, on the truck for 2,301 dollars.
Geez. Wow, we could scrap it for that.
We're not really buying bids for trucks.
Ain't nothing on?
There's so many out there, if you look in the magazine.
Is there? Ain't nothing on the truck? I mean, you know?
Look in the magazine, they had, they had one older than that, priced 30 grand on it.
Yeah, but it's still there, so hasn't sold.
So, all, I mean, I've been imagining.
But it'll probably have all kinds of equipment on it, so. None of them stripped.
None of them did.
I mean, this one, I don't know.
That should have the suction hose, the ladders on it, because that part of the T O D.
Well, yeah.
We've got a lot we'll throw in. We get no bids on that either. Anything else?
Yes, on your car that you're buying or whatever, I think that's, I don't think it's, it's proper for the village to have a car like that.
It's a little late, it's ordered.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, I mean, you know, to go out and rent the car, I think as many times as we rented a car and stuff like that, I think this, renting the car would be a lot cheaper than, than buying that car.
Well, then, you could just take a look and see what we're doing right now.
You know, I mean, I mean, when I worked for the village, I mean, we only rented a car once a year or twice a year, you know, I mean, or pay mileage, you know?
Yeah, you can get up, add up all the mileage to come up with the accurate figure.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, 20 cents a mile or 30 cents a mile, I mean, it's an awful lot of difference in 26, 28,000 dollars, you know, in a year, or five years, or whatever. Anyway, my other issue is on the stop signs and the speed limits, or the speed limits in the village. I think that's another issue. Have you changed that yet?
There's a motion to be 25 mile an hour speed limit in the village, except on Pride Street, Church Street, Shaflane Street, and Lake Street.
I think that's going to be.